Able to post stuff yet to the website, Trevor?
Yeah, I was gonna. We're there. Ready, Anton?
Recording in progress.
All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Wednesday, March 20th, meeting of the Trinidad City Planning Commission. Go ahead and call this meeting to order and begin with a roll call.
Trishley?
I'm here.
Oh.
Present.
Sherman.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Hopkins.
All right, I've got a full count tonight so far. That may change based on a few agenda items. All right, so what next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes this February 21st meeting. Commissioner Hopkins, Tom and I were not here, so have added everybody else. Any changes you guys want to see the February 21st meeting?
Do I have other things?
Just one very, very small issue on page four or six. Under the item three, the staff report, the third line from the bottom. The sentences, because much of it won't apply to Trinidad, provided, provided an overview of the joint city council, I assume that that meant staff. Are you following that? Annette?
Yeah, no, that's difficult. I will change it first, provided.
Second. Most favor?
Aye.
Two steps to the top line, all right. Now, through the agenda, the agenda for tonight, are there any changes anybody would like to have to the agenda? I do, sorry, go. Just note that we have two members of the public here. I didn't know, are you guys here for the trail discussion or items one and two on the agenda?
We're for the general.
Okay.
I see you're for building on Berry Road.
Okay, so one of each. All right, there goes that concept. Okay, any changes anybody would like to see to the order or what's on the agenda tonight?
If not, pushing to approve.
Okay, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimous.
Aye.
All right, this is now time for items from the floor. This is three minutes for anybody in the audience that has something to say that is not on tonight's agenda. Public online, anything unrelated to what's on the agenda that is dying to come out? No? Okay. All right, seeing no items from the floor, we'll go ahead and move on now to the regular agenda items. Agenda item number one. We have, the first two agenda items involve Commissioner Cole and a project that he's requesting, a subdivision. The second one is designer agreement. And I'll start with Trevor.
Sure. Number one. Yeah, so these are related but separate projects with separate actions and separate sets of findings. The first one is a subdivision, minor subdivision, so lots split into two parcels. The lot is currently developed and just, it will just basically be split down the middle into parcels of approximately 55,000 square feet and 20, well over 20,000 square feet. And, and then the smaller one as an existing garage that will be redeveloped as part of next application. So the project is basically at the end of the
Just one quick thing, do we want to just fast forward to the recusal if there are going to be any, so that if that happens, people are leaving the room?
Sure.
Just since there I know is a potential conflict of interest with Commissioner Hopkins, I don't know what your decision on that was.
Yeah, no, I need to recuse.
Okay, so then in that case, you can recuse yourself in the first two items? Agenda one and two, okay, we'll give you, are you gonna wait outside or?
Let's, you have to leave the room, I believe.
Yeah, I think that's the best.
Practice, best, best practice would say that, so you can't be like
Yes.
But, but you don't, you legally are not required to leave the room, so.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll leave the room.
Okay.
Well, it's my understanding too, though, if you have any public comment that you want to make on either one of these agendas, you're welcome to say, make comment.
Okay. Bye bye.
Yeah, so you can be members of the public, yeah. Yeah. Role as a commissioner for these two items instead as the applicant. All right, sorry, just wanted to clarify that. We got two minutes left. Thanks.
So the project is located on the north side of Berry Road, basically, not at the quite end of Berry Road, but at the end of the developed portion of Berry Road, so the last developed parcel on Berry. It is, the site is developed with an existing, existing single-family residence and two attached garages. And that's in the southern part of the parcel, it's relatively flat, Berry Road. And another portion of the parcel is fairly steep. Forested and drops down into the maintenance. There are a couple easements on the property, there's a undeveloped city easement from the old water tank property to Mill Creek. To sort that property since then, and then the PGV line also. So just a little, a couple of comments like I mentioned before about the process, that the you know, it's hard to predict how the subdivision will increase development potential of the parcels. The subdivision isn't required to build another residence on this parcel, the SR zone under the current zoning would allow a second unit, and the parcel's large enough for that under the current zoning. And then with the lot splits, the parcel two would not be large enough for a second unit under the current zoning. Parcel one would still potentially be large enough, but and then we're working on an ABU ordinance of course that would limit, would remove some of those density restrictions and make it easier to create an ABU. But whether there's actually room remaining on these parcels to create another unit, it's just pretty questionable. Because of the, the steep slopes and the forested area that has to remain. So could increase development potential a little bit with this. Like I said, it's pretty straightforward, lot split, although we don't deal with a lot of subdivisions in Trinidad, I think this is I did send out referrals to all the various agencies and tribes, city engineer had, had some comments for requirements for parcel maps, so that's been included as a condition of approval. CDFW was concerned about development portion of the project and did do a site visit, I'll talk to her about that. For that project, we already dealt with the condition, the conflicts of interest. And the project is consistent with the city subdivision ordinance, which is also part of the city's LCP. And so subdivision also is also issued with development permit. Because the lots will have access on Berry Road, it's just a lot split, they already have access to these that are adjacent, aren't any dedications or anything like that that's part of the project. The, the thing that's a little bit different with the process from, from most of our permits is that the subdivision also does require city council. So your motion tonight will be a recommendation to have to look at management. Nope, I did not, so I'll have to reword the motion a little bit. No, it is, it isn't. I mean, then in terms of zoning ordinance and general plan consistency, the, the project as proposed, does not make it difficult to develop a property that meets all the setbacks and things like that. And it's consistent with various general plan policies. There are some unstable areas or questionably stable areas on the north end of what would be parcel one. And there was R1, engineering geological soils report done for the project and found no instabilities within the southern developed areas of the parcel. And made some recommendations for, for the foundation. I found that the project could, could be built and the subdivision would cause any issues of stability. There is sensitive habitat, so real good forest is now very sensitive habitat, so obviously not a rare habitat type around here, but globally, even statewide, it's considered rare. So that will be designed, a notice of development plan is proposed, which is pretty standard for subdivisions with some of these requirements that will apply to development as well, so, and that will reveal that that line of habitat and development occur ready for us to have a chat. Like I said, all city electrical and water already exists in the site in Berry Road. And so that's, that's not an issue in these parcels, it does not appear that use would be issued with parcels as well. A new septic system is proposed, so septic system design for this project for the proposed development on parcel two, as well as a reserve field for the existing house. One, DEH commented that that's their requirement. Talk about the ESHA, so staff recommends approval of the project, there's a sample motion in there, and as usual, you have options. You can add or change conditions of approval to address other concerns, delay action and continue the project. To get more information, where the deal with the project is not consistent with the city's cost and the conditions of approval are that the applicant reimbursed the city. The approval for the, for the parcel map is for a one-year period, but I think Michigan extension. Account show, apply with any recommendations of the city engineer. And just because the parcel is, this parcel two is fairly close to 20,000 square feet, but just a minimum lot, lot size. The condition does include that the city engineer will specifically make sure that that lot is at least 20,000 square feet. And then the number five is the development plan. Owners know both about the soils report recommendations and
Okay, next we'll go to commissioners' questions of the staff. I did want to just let everybody know that I did do a site visit today, this afternoon, just to get out there and walk it and see and make the map come alive, so just wanted to close that. Any commissioner questions for Trevor on the staff report?
I have one, I think, and my, my question's actually less related to compliance with the general mountain zoning ordinance and more about the zoning itself. Because that particular area is pretty dense, right? Like if you think about, I'm just pulling text here from the staff report. You know, the purpose of the zone is to allow low-density residential development consistent with neighboring densities compatible with any physical or environmental size limitations. And I think that that's, that's certainly true when you look at, you know, floor to lot area ratios, this is 2.8% or, I guess this is more relevant to the second part of the but considering, I guess, rather than floor to lot area ratios. When you think about things like lower to building envelope size ratio, or a floor area to like frontage along Berry Road ratios, that area is like, it's pretty dense.
Yeah, especially lower down road, yeah.
I'm just wondering if that sort of concerns you as a city manager, that's that density and
No, because I think, you know, the, the I mean, I guess low density isn't defined in, in the zoning ordinance, but there is a minimum lot size, which is the 20,000 square feet, and so I think you don't necessarily exactly know what they had in mind in the seventies when they wrote that, but we can assume that 20,000 square feet is consistent with low density.
Things make concern, and I'll, I'll let this be, but I mean, the building envelope there is significantly less than 20,000 square feet.
Sure, yes, yes. So the buildable area is less, yes.
Okay, if you're not concerned about it.
I mean, I, I see what you're saying, but I think we have seen some of these lots developed, especially on that side of the road in the last ten, ten years, and there's always, there's some, you know, soil issues, there's spill from the freeway up there, which is part of the reason for the foundation reports, and then the seat forest area, so they're all pretty they are fairly cookie cutter lots up along there on that side, and I think this project is
Yeah, I agree with you, it just sort of struck me because I also sort of drove by recently. It's, it's right there than it is the town itself.
Part, like part of that's because the houses are right there, because that's
That's what I got, right? It's my parents, I saw the houses pretty much stacked on top.
Just a couple of quick things. I guess it's not a big deal, but I was just curious as to whether or not at this point, does it make sense for the city to vacate the easement?
I mean, I asked the applicant if he wanted to do that and didn't think it was really worth pursuing, but you could ask him again.
Okay, I was just curious as to whether or not there was anything from the city's perspective that would benefit one way or the other, I don't know, I just
Not that I know of, and not that the city, you know, I would sort of rely on the city engineer for commenting on something like that, and they didn't raise any issue.
So I didn't, I apologize, I did not get a chance to go back and look at the lot line adjustments that we, that we reviewed several months ago on Underwood. And is this similar to that project?
Uh, no, it's a little different because this is actually a subdivision, so it's creating a new parcel where the lot line adjustment was actually reduced the number of parcels, but regardless, a subdivision is, that creates new parcels is a much different problem.
That's what I was confused about, okay. So, and that's the reason then for this notice of development plan?
Yeah, so, and, and we did the same thing for the NAC lot split, so the Ewok project last month, that was, that was the other subdivision that, that I've done in Trinidad, and so, you know, when you do a subdivision, you do a bunch of studies, usually depending on, on the conditions, and so you want to make sure that future development you know, follows the recommendations of those studies, and so that's, that's the reason for the notice of development. Now, in this case, it's a little different because one lot is already developed and the other lot, you're getting the, the development application concurrently. But that doesn't mean that additional development wouldn't be proposed. Which would still adhere to those steps.
That brings me to my next question, and there's an awful lot of information in the background. Soils investigation, maybe a geo report, and a lot of it falls on the, falls into the responsibility of the city engineer and building sector. And while I have great confidence that, that they will do their jobs correctly, it, it just kind of in the back of my mind, there's an itch that if there is something that's like an I gotcha that we don't know about. How do we find out about that, or should we even be involved in? I guess what I'm trying to say is, does it make sense for these kinds of things where there's not, we don't have these documents. We can request them, but I'm not sure that we need to, but do we need at some point to have the, the have this project come back, and if nothing else, do a thumbs up, say that there's nothing that's in the nothing that's changed, or could it be a consent agenda item that says, done everything, everything worked out right? I just don't know what I don't know, I guess is what I'm saying. And I don't know if that's a big deal, but I get a little nervous because we don't see some of this stuff, and there's an awful lot of responsibility placed on other entities which we'll never see.
Well, that's, I mean, that's our normal procedure, I mean, we had, you know, projects, you know, sometimes we cut some projects off, seen it dry, they have a lot of stability issues. It's, the conditions are, we adhere to the recommendations of those reports. But, you know, the soils report did find that the project will neither contribute to nor be subject to geologic hazard or soil instability. If, if the recommendations of that report fall. And we do have a more robust conditions checklist system where the you know, I transmit all the conditions of approval to the responsible party, and someone has to sign off on those bits of make sure that all that is reviewed and met.
Well, that's good to know, that there's some sort of a call to check and balance that, that someone is checking off the boxes to okay, I, those are my comments.
The questions I had have all been answered and addressed, either by the site visit or by you, Trevor, tonight. I did want to, for the record, just note that there was one email that I received, I think we all did, in support of this from the kitchens, and at this point, if there are no other questions, Trevor, I'll open it up to the applicant if Tristan, you have anything you'd like to say or add from the project?
Sure, yeah, I don't have a whole lot to add. A little background, I mean, I would say that given my lot is currently developed with house and garage and another separate garage that's certified by its own driveway. I think subdivision. A lot of people already come to my house and think that garage and its own driveway, that's going to be on parcel two. Something to put down. Second to that. They already think that's its own property, so the, the appearance of, on the street hardly looks like it's two lots to most people. And I guess I'm trying to take advantage of it. It seemed like a good opportunity. Give us more flexibility and that's invaluable, probably. I guess to address Chris's question regarding the density, I do understand what you're saying about like density within building envelope. But at least in my opinion, I feel like driving down or walking down Berry Road, it's still like a different feel and walking down it's different town, maybe that's just, and I think a lot, I mean, even though the houses might be somewhat similar in space, I think having this forest land behind all those houses, rather than just like a backyard, back up to the backyard. Sort of does give them more rural or separate kind of other comments on the subdivision portion.
Any questions for Tristan on that? Yes, no? Okay, cool, thanks. Open it up to public comments on item one, which is just strictly the subdivision at this point, if any in the room or online. Hello?
I'm Eric Mayer, I live on the road, maybe two houses down it for Tristan. I'm just here on my behalf and some of our neighbors that we just have a really quiet wonderful neighborhood, and so my concern is just maybe if the house is quiet hours, so it's not just steady construction, because it's been a long winter, we're all put the forest sunshine. So if we could do like maybe Monday through Friday, nine to six, have a little time on the weekend without construction, that would be really wonderful. But congratulations, it's important, so that's pretty much all I can say.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Not seeing anybody, not seeing any hands raised online, the reason I'm muting themselves, let's bring it back to the commission then. Any further discussion or motion?
Based on the information submitted in the application included in the staff report and public testimony at the hearing, I find the project is consistent with the city's LCP and other applicable regulations, and I move to recommend that the city council adopt the information findings in the staff report approved the subdivision as submitted and as conditioned therein.
A second? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, passes three zero. We'll get onto agenda item number two, Trevor.
Right, so so related item, this is the development of what will what will be parcel two after the subdivision is finalized. Almost all the development occurs on what will be parcel two, but there is the reserve leach field area on parcel one and two, two trees on parcel one, so project involves removal of the existing garage shop and a portion of the existing driveway on parcel two and strapped 1,152 square foot, two-story, two-bedroom, single-family residence with a detached 780 square foot garage. The project also involves construction of a new septic system and removal of 14 trees, 10 alders and four redwoods that either pose a hazard to structures or have been damaged by describe the site again, I similarly, I sent out referrals for this project. We did not receive any comments, except as I noted, DEH noted that septic system meets their requirements. CDFW did have some concerns about tree removal and visited the site and their concerns were alleviated, they noted that the trees Um they noted that the trees that are proposed to be removed are within the already developed area, not the forest area. And um and or have been damaged by. Train. Um they did request um. That tree removal occur outside the nesting season, um alternatively, um a nesting bird survey could be conducted. That's true removal, so that's been included as a condition of approval. Um as Chris noted, the property's owned S R um. And with a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet, this lot will be able to go to the bat. Um the required yards have been met by the project. Parking is met um with a combination of of the. A portion of the existing driveway as well as a little bit of new driveway to access Berry Road. Um and make room for the septic system, which will be in the front yard. Um the the structure is about twenty-three feet, five and a half inches, so it's um meets the the height limit. Um bore area is fairly um small per for Trinidad standards. Um the square footages are shown in table one point one or table one, and as are the Florida area ratio. So um the other. The other measure that the planning officials uses is the, what would be ten percent in the suburban residential area, which would be a two thousand square foot. On a twenty thousand square foot lot, so this is well under that um standard. Um it's not anticipated that this project will affect views, but the neighbors have their. As I noted before, um. A portion of what will be parcel one is designated as unstable, but the. No development occurs within that area, and soils report found there wouldn't be any problems. Um. It's not within the city's M S four stormwater area. A grading permit is required because it will disturb more than a thousand square square feet, so the city engineer will have to review. Um the building plans in terms of the. Grading ordinance standards, that's been included as a condition of approval. A new septic system, um as I noted, D H um has reviewed the plans and said that it meets the requirements. Condition approval has been included that the applicant. To get a permit from from D P H. And uh including instruction of the septic system. One thing I realized that um is not in in here in the conditions of approval is our standard condition for deed restriction. And. With, you know, uh full implementation of the city's O W T S program, I've I've contemplated whether that's still necessary. I'm not sure this is really the the place to have that that discussion, and I have found that. Even with that in place and the subject permits, um when when I watch the questionnaires from people, they still think they have more units of bedrooms than they actually do. Um so I still think it might be a useful tool, and so I would propose that we add that standard condition. Like I say, I think in the future we might have a a confrontation, but that's still necessary. Um I the the habitat, um as I mentioned, the the redwood forest um. Is a sensitive habitat, um the boundary is shown um on the on the plans and will be as part of the development plan. It's kept up by the city, there's all that's supposed to occur in there. Um Mill Creek is is located well away, there's a small tributary that that comes off off Berry Road that's. Project is more than fifty feet away from that, not hundred feet away from the stuff of the creek. So no issues there. The tree removal requires a use permit, so the use permit findings are included in there. The applicant did submit some information regarding the trees proposed to be removed. And with some photos on there. And and then the designer view, view protection findings, and as you showed, I've been written on them to allow approval. But you can change the wording of the findings as needed based on. Public testimony or um your own um interpretations. A staff recommendation as for approval of the project. You know, your alternatives of adding conditions. Deals can be made. Uh uh conditions of approval are pretty standard. I gave it a two-year time limit, since parcel map has to be recorded first. So that's to to get a building permit. Uh recommended conditions of the city engineer and building inspector shall be required to be met. And grading drainage erosion control, foundation design, street improvements, vegetation, and the ability to set up. At the time, building permits are applied for. Um all recommendations of the soils and geologic report will be adhered to. For five is the conditions on the getting the O W T S permit and uh construction sign off on that. The uh number six is the standard erosion control um condition. Number eight is the tree removal shall occur outside of the nesting bird season or the bird survey will occur um. No more than seventy-two hours prior to tree removal, um sure, active nest. Third. Um. An applicant shall direct move drainage away from the septic system. Water service connection be shown on the building plans and approved at public works. First one permits required for any work within the right of ways of a driveway apron, basically. And then I would propose adding. To thirteen, our standard one, deed restriction. Form approval, but city attorney will be reported, and then probably the two bedrooms and the rest of the trivia without city.
Thanks, Trevor. Uh question questions of Trevor?
I've got a couple of them.
Please go ahead.
Is it normal for some of your referrals to go unaddressed?
Yeah, so referrals when I send out, I say if if we don't hear from you by a certain date. Then we'll then we'll assume you have them on this. So yes, that is such a great.
That's the other one is. About um. Something I don't want to start really getting hung up on, but I've got a question about uh screening. What's the use permit finding before, maybe not super relevant, but somewhat relevant? Is screen or screening defined in the code?
No, and it's generally applied, there there is a requirement for screening for commercial. Projects um for things like. Storage and trash and things like that. And then we do tend to require screening for the propane tanks in in certain areas of the town where they'll be visible. Um but no, it's it's.
It just it just sort of occurs to me since, you know, property abuts that E H S A. That screening might be considered sort of bidirectional, right? That vegetation might. Protect that sensitive habitat, meaning like noise or light pollution produced by the residence itself. That's way out base, or not something. It doesn't really, I don't think in this case it affects whether we can support that funding, I was curious about.
I think it absolutely, and I think, you know, one of the things that our code is currently lacking is protections for issues. Um in terms of um. Lights in there and things like that. Um in this case, I believe the plan specified that the lights are shifted and down. But I think that is, yeah, that's a. You could go both ways.
I think you've answered this already, but there's uh outside of the standard erosion control. Checking something that might be addressed during the issuance of a grading permit, no other concerns about proximity to Mill Creek?
No, this is it's well over a hundred feet with a lot of forest and vegetation, so.
Okay, thanks.
Um just a couple of minor things, um. So it it's as I understand it, there are undeveloped parcels that are that continue down uh. Berry domain. Somewhere down there fairly soon, you run into the city limits. And um I know that notification was sent to. Adjacent property owners, but the fact that this is undeveloped and been undeveloped for a long time. I'm fully aware of this because I lived in that area for some time. Um. But we never heard back and and on on the owner of that parcel.
No, um and I know the applicant contacted neighbors of developed parcels.
Right, that makes sense, of course.
But no, you know, and we send, um and there's no water account to send anybody to, so it's just what's in the accessory rule. Um you know, I didn't stop at city boundaries. But um I it's a hundred feet is required, I mean, at least you.
Um then just a a clarification and make sure that I understand the map, I'm looking in the parcel, preliminary parcel map. And um. Or the new. Driveway entrance off of Berry, back behind the proposed uh historic building. I can't. Tell from the legend exactly what that uh distance is, I mean, it looks to me like it is very narrow. Uh I'm looking down in kind of the right.
I yeah, I believe it's twelve feet at the. Narrow.
Is that one there?
So right, so there's the apron, yeah, it's it's in tiny little print, like within the. Berry Road right away.
Okay. But but my point, I guess, is that I just want to make sure, because on one hand, we have the leach field. And on the other hand, we have uh the parcel boundary line. And so that's pretty narrow, and I just want to make sure that somehow or another that. Is not going to be a conflict.
Yeah, that's a good um. That's a good point, and the I know the applicant was able to identify where the property corners are, so um. I I do understand he has a pretty good idea of where those are. Um. But we could, you know, ask the city engineer to to look at that specifically. And also, it probably would be good to have a curb. On the. West edge of that particular leach field.
Well, yeah, um I I recognize that the leach field area is probably larger than the actual leach field. Uh itself, physical leach field, but nevertheless, kind of. We that obviously has to be protected. And it just seemed to me like that was pretty narrow in there, and I just want to make sure that that's highlighted, to make sure that we have sufficient access there. And I don't recall what is the minimum driveway width that is re is allowed?
Have to look it up, but twelve feet is pretty standard.
Okay.
I believe it's it's twelve feet for. That ways.
Um. I just want to make sure that that that's clarified. Yeah, another, I hope we don't have a I gotcha, this is what I'm trying to.
All right, Trevor, I had a couple that came up for you and then a couple for. Tristan, um regarding the uh. His wildlife's desire to have it outside of nesting season, I just want to clarify for my brain. Still, their concern was about the nesting, and they asked that it only be done during. Outside of the nesting season, yet we're conditioning it to allow for that, I I want, I I have no problem with that and understand that a survey will preclude any problems, but. Are they okay with that too, C F T W?
Yeah, that's pretty standard, um and I use language that we've used before and that I've seen in other documents, um and. I. It it's the um. It's a newer thing that we're trying to implement in Trinidad, I I overlooked it in Ewok project, but I did follow up with him. And and he agreed to to follow that condition anyway, um. So, you know, it's it's something that would be. Jim, I would require this state law, you can disturb active nests, I mean, in your own backyard too. It's good to to just check for nasty for you.
And then my other question was on condition number four. Uh that's about the uh. Ge- geological hazard hazard report and the foundation soils. I just want to make sure that the wording of that that unless another report is prepared that supersedes it, so I just want to make sure it's not a opportunity to have, hey, I found. I mean, and I'm not concerned at all with this particular project, but just as far as standard verbiage. Hey, I found a different report that doesn't have the same level of stringency, and it now supersedes it by date, so therefore, hey, it just said it needed to be a newer report, and I have a new report. So I don't know if there's verbiage that we need to tighten up.
Well, you could say another qualified report.
Um.
Or a report prepared by qualified professional.
Well, I mean, that I would assume that, but you know, you can, there's a lot of opinions and reports out there. And again, I'm not necessarily worried for this project, but where where would that happen if, let's say, uh we got two reports that contradicted each other, who's the tiebreaker on that? For the city, the city engineer, the.
I mean, it depends on the circumstances, I guess, um. You know, I know, you know, for example, with CEQA, there's case law. Document here, dealing with. Um in a situation like this. Um. We have this one on the record now, and you know, I think. With a notice of development plan, um the city would pull this report. And if someone wanted to submit something else that says, hey, you know, this guy knows more about soils than this other guy did, he says this. I mean, I I'd probably do that up to the city engineer. If that's.
That was it for me, uh applicant Tristan, yeah, I think for us.
Yeah, I mean. Uh the existing shop at this site, uh while it isn't a useful building. Uh to. Like it. Does have a failing. Foundation, which as discussed in here, there are some consolidated fills on site, and that is the reason for the failing. Foundation on it, inside there's large cracks that stay. The two beds have built. Um. So I guess that's part of my justification for wanting to tear it down, and also not really using the building to its fullest capacity, it's really quite a large shop. And it was built in a different era, and people had different. Uh. Buildings like that, it's not really served its first purpose like it used to twenty years ago. Um. And I'd like to live. House that's. Got you. So. Um. Yeah, regarding the trees that are on site, um. Most of those, I would say all of those trees, well, all the alders on site are basically the same age as. Um the building, so like they pushed that out and solidated, so a lot of the building there, uh that that garage. Those alders sprout, they like disturb soils and things. As the alders do, some are leaning every which way, and then, as I mentioned with some of the other ones, um. B G D has really. Down a number on them over the years, and they come by every six weeks to keep them. And so that's pretty hard on the redwoods, uh there's stump sprouts that. You know, they're probably third growth stump sprouts, they probably cut the second growth tree when they built. That uh shop back in the eighties, and now there's a. Cluster of these small little stump sprouts that we can, they're growing underneath power lines, um. I don't, and although I don't. They're pretty unsightly, but. Case to prevent them from being around trees, but also I don't want those. Redwood roots getting into my septic system, which is just right there. I'll open the questions I can handle.
Richard, Chris, anything for Tristan?
Panel, I'm going first, this is something as well. Again, we all take standard.
Had to break the tradition then, just a question on the finished max height. It's 23 feet, 5.5 inches. Where is that measured from? I know it's come up on projects before.
Uh, that's measured from the top of the foundation, so.
Okay.
Obviously the. A requirement is from the. It's slow. Average ground, average ground, average ground elevation, so care will be. Taken to make sure that it's.
On five, okay. Okay.
I didn't question, if I question to the max of the.
Right. So you left yourself that. Footish, right, okay. And then my second question for you, if I can find it again. But just relative to the noise request from the neighbor, any issues? Uh, construction, not to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I see, I see some comments on that. I mean, while I'm not going to be building destruction myself, I would. Talk to myself. First of all, full time job, some of that work will occur on weekends. I think something that I could agree to is. Maybe like no heavy equipment use on the weekends. Maybe pay tons of money, but find others.
Second one to you.
I think that's great, but I also will have. Sure. So. Myself. Let's get this, when you guys done products in the past. You're my favorite anywhere on the block, because you just tackle it and mute it. I get it directly, go like try to get out for more creative time, so I'm already like on the side of that. So you just maybe consider.
Sure. Yeah, I can consider that, I guess. Further comment to your comment earlier. But it's unlikely that. You have to go like. So. So it might be, the bulk of it might have actually occurred. But I guess. I'm certainly open to. Being in contact with you if it's an issue.
Thanks. And then just Trevor, can you, I was looking for it in the Muni Club, but couldn't come across it quickly. What are our hours that we have existing? They're allowable for construction within city limits.
There are, I think it's. It's in the grading ordinance. Yeah, so that's chapter 15. 15.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. And I believe it does allow construction on the weekends. It's it's not a real limited window and often for larger projects, we limit it beyond that. But then also the city engineer always likes to make sure that there's flexibility. To get work done on the weekends if there's delays and things like that. So yeah, there's sometimes a balance between just getting it done and.
Yeah, so, you know, I just wanted to be, there are existing kind of. Bumpers on times that are allowed, so. For construction. For what it's worth, you know, it sounds like you've got a good neighbor willing to work with you, so.
Well, I love it, we talked really well, which is, I, every time we meet each other, we're there, so, you know.
Those are my questions for Tristan. Let's keep breaking tradition, Richard.
Oh, okay, just one last question, since there is a grading permit involved in this. Is there a need for a cultural monitor?
It was not requested. In referrals, you know, I think we're at the point for city projects, we just always require, right, for city projects. But for credit projects, we haven't started doing that yet, so it's not required anymore, so it must be.
Okay.
For the EOL project, it was.
Yes, I remember that.
And this is. It's mo, it is mostly filled. Stir soils.
A couple of quick questions. The correct answer, this one might be, it's none of your business, but 1152 square feet seems pretty small for a two story house. I don't have any problems with that, but just since we're scrutinizing design, I'd ask why you often do two stories.
I, yeah, absolutely. I think it goes back to our discussion. Or regards to like the building below on the site. Given the 30 foot front yard setback that I have in the SR zone and having to fit in a septic system. With a leach and 100% reserve. I was able to fit all that in to the front yard setback. For the most part. And then also backing up to the slope in the back and the wish to have. Garage. Having a smaller footprint really just made a lot more sense. That's one reason, the second reason is for efficiency sake. Granted, the other house on the parcel one, which is a single story. Sort of drawing house. And I heat my house with wood pretty much exclusively. Talk to you.
Pretty visible person. You know, I've been in these meetings where people talk about like firestorms and seem very alarmist and fear mongering to me. But I was curious. I mean, it seems almost preposterous now to think about that being a fire prone area, but maybe less so 50, 60 years from now. So just sort of curious what elements of fire resistant design may have gone into this video. I think.
I guess, I mean, a lot of that stuff is now sort of standardized. Building codes, but you know, like on your attic venting and stuff, that's the screen so that way the hivers can flow bigger. Hostages or. It's. Yeah, I guess. I wouldn't say that I considered that too much in in. In terms of the design. I think. A lot of that comes down to like having some defensive space, which is huge in my neighborhood, which backs up to. To the forest, which is good, another reason to remove those trees particularly. I would say the one is that clump of redness that have listed like. Because B G keeps talking, it's just turns into a giant bush. It's all, it's like a bush that's 30. That's a torture next to it. Okay. But. So I guess to answer your question, I didn't consider it too much, but yeah, that is a consideration.
I mean, you're forced to consider it by the building code, which is good enough for me in terms of right here, so if there's anything above beyond that. And then the last thing I have to say is really more of a comment. And given the discussion last month, I just want to state on the record. Now that I really appreciate your, I assume voluntarily provided explicit descriptions of why each cluster of trees should be removed. I want to add that I wholeheartedly believe your rationale for three people. And I think that's pretty clear that the. The benefits obviously outweigh any costs of treating people, particularly except for cheap. I minded these.
All right, we'll go ahead and open this up to public comments now. Anybody in the public, now is your chance. Anybody online, unmute yourself, raise your hand, or in the room, please step up to the microphone. He's rushing in the room here and nobody's muting themselves online, so I'll go ahead and bring it back to the commission then. Any additional discussion amongst the commissioners? Richard, did you have anything specific to that driveway concern, just?
I. Very difficult to tell exactly what that dimension is. Like other. Measured distances on the. Land so you can see that. Starts to look like 10 feet. My concern is that I just want to make sure that between the city engineer. And. Yes, applicant that there is sufficient. That we meet the requirement for driveway entry. And prevent any damage to either the. Leach field and or intrusion onto the. Next parcel over.
Um, would you like to add a condition or maybe we could add some language to condition number three? Where the requirements of the city engineer and building inspector.
Yeah, that would be fine, just just some sort of simple note to. Say, hey, let's take a look at that just to make sure.
I will just add that. The engineer or building inspector will specifically review with a location on the driveway in regards to leach field and property limits.
Thank you. That works.
All right, then I'll go ahead and make a motion.
May interrupt you for. Yeah, absolutely, there is a discussion of a 13th condition about. Yeah, restrictions, it's going to be included.
All right, so based on the information submitted in the application included in the staff report and public testimony at the hearing. I find that the project is consistent with the city's LCP and other applicable regulations. I move to adopt the information, design review and youth permit findings in the staff report and approve the product as submitted and conditioned here therein. With the addition to number three, Trevor, regarding the driveway and the protection to the leach field. And then also the addition of a 13th deed, 13th. Condition being our standard deed restriction of number of bedrooms. That we've been putting in all our projects. I have a second. All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, all right, passage unanimously, say three zero.
That's the way it's made.
All right, Trevor, number three. Slash four slash three.
Yeah, and so I apologize in your hard copies, your packets, the material for items three and four switched. You guys have that updated on the website, but for your hard copies. Material behind number three is actually for Axel Ingrin. Description is for Van Wijk, so.
Well, which are, which are we going with as item number three?
I'm going to continue as agenda is item three will be Van Wijk, so. The packet page 43 then, that will technically jump to packet page 57, if that makes sense. In the hard copies we have. Kind of just a housekeeping thing, so we'll do the Van Wijk first, Trevor.
All right, so. Just a little bit of background, most of you are probably aware. Van Wijk trail in the uncaved section. Have been failing for many years. The city looked at getting some funding for repairs. Done a large grant for Caltrans around 17. So. And, but that included a large reach chaining wall and a multi, multi mobile trail. And became controversial because it was considered. Large, high scale of the community, had a lot of impacts. And so. With the grant, the city lifted a variety of options, but was never able to come up with. An appropriate alternative. And therefore. The grant was given back and the city closed the trail. The primary reason for closing the trail was due to the city's insurance company and. What what ParsAC is, is it's basically a. It's officially a joint powers authority, but basically it's a co-op of cities that self insure. So there's, there's 37 member cities and they all pool resources to. To each other for liability insurance, so it's not a, it's not an insurance corporation. But a representative from from ParsAC visited the trail and found that. Why they couldn't defend liability on that trail as unsafe. Part of the reason there, there are some protections for for cities when they have trails in terms of liability. But one, it's, it's expensive to defend regardless, but it also doesn't buy when there's improvements. And so there's that failed retaining wall. See it anymore, but so that made it so that that. You know, kind of immunity from liability wouldn't apply, so. So the city, so that they asked the city to oppose that trail. A new representative has since revisited the site. Basically confirmed their findings and the trail is in worse shape than it was then. And, and they actually as a board voted to exclude that trail from liability coverage. So the city has no, no coverage on that trail. It's not in a condition to open. The, the, the city's decision to close the trail temporarily. Was appealed to the city council and the coastal commission. Coastal commission. Allowed time, allowed time, hoping that the city would come up with, with some other solutions. Unfortunately, it kind of got dropped by the wayside. Coastal commission took back of the appeal and heard it at their September meeting last year. They found no substantial issue with the appeal, which means it put the city's. Action back in place starting then, so we're now at the. End of the expiration of the six month trail closure that the planning commission approved in. And so, but since then, so at that meeting, the September meeting, the coastal commission itself. Made it very clear that they wanted to see action in six months and. Coastal commission staff took that to heart and city staff and coastal commission staff have been meeting monthly since then. To discuss various repair options and alternatives. One complicating factor is that both the Yarra tribe, the tribal council passed a resolution requesting the trail. Be closed and the TRA ancestral society also requested that the trail be closed. Due to impacts to cultural resources. We did look at some kind of light touch, you know, putting in just. Wooden kind of log stairs or just rebar. In and that was not amenable. We did meet with the TRA management team recently to discuss some of these options. But they are amenable to potentially moving the trail up slope. The city has been in contact with the up slope property owners. And are discussing options for potentially obtaining an easement. Move the trail up slope, it would be, they're calling kind of a goat trail, kind of unimproved walking path through there in my soil disturbance. The letter from the ancestral societies included, they would, they are open to considering that as an option. But we just need more time, six months, that six months included holidays, it was. We had two or three months where we really need to meet. To have meetings because of holidays and things like that. And the city, we're also looking at pedestrian improvements to Edward Street. Well, both short and and long term. So we're just at this point, you know, the trail's not in a condition that it can be opened. We have. Torture on options that we can implement tomorrow. And so we're requesting another temporary six month closure and hopefully have some. Concrete. Place for that.
Questions from the commissioners. Questions from the commissioners.
So. Where do we stand? And and I guess I guess I'll start by saying that we're not going to solve Van Wijk Trail problem tonight. That's for sure. So. At least I don't think we can. Um, but I am curious as to where we think the discussions with the property owners. Of the up slope of the trail are at this point. I mean. My recollection and this has been going on for. Years in these discussion. I do recall at one time that. Uh, there was adamant. No. But then things change, properties change. And so I, where where do we stand with the discussions on that proposed option?
It it looks like at least a couple of them are on the call or on the at the meeting tonight. Um. I haven't been involved in those meetings. That's been Eli that's leading that up. But from my understanding is. That they are open to it, you know, the devil's in the details, of course, but um. They seem to be amenable to the possibility.
Yeah, this is Eric Fishman. If I'd like to just make a comment, I'm one of the landowners and I'd just like to state that, yeah, I've always supported reopening the trail. Um, and I'm in discussions uh, with people to uh. To do that. Um, I want to do everything I can to make it happen. Uh, but. I want to make sure that it's a plan that's acceptable by the Yurok tribe. And the commission here and in general, the citizens of Trinidad. So I believe that there is a solution at hand and very open to it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Fishman. Um, we'll deviate a little bit from protocol here since we had a comment from the public and I'll open it up to the. Duclou, I I'm sure I'm not doing your last name justice, but I believe you're one of the other property owners.
Um, yes, and actually you did great with my name, Duclou.
Okay.
So.
Do you have a comment just specific to kind of that topic about the the reopening? Right now is kind of really all in light entertain and then we'll open back up to general public comment here when we get to that section, if that makes sense.
Oh, okay. So I don't know. I just wanted to. Way in because there's been such a change in the planning commission since the last time I came, which was before the pandemic. Um, that I've that I've always supported the trail. And early on in our discussions with Dan Berman, we offered to donate land. Um, if that helped with a lot of concerns. Um. And of course, over the years, we just learned that it was much more controversial than that. And much more complicated than. Accept the grant and say yes. Um, but. With Eric and our other neighbor who are directly in contact with the trail, we all agree that um. We would like to see the trail reopened. Um. And we were in the process of writing a letter to the city and then we heard that maybe the reopening was off the table because of opposition from the tribes. So we're just kind of standing by and waiting to see. Um, when plans can be developed and what exactly is being asked.
Yeah, thank you.
May I may I interject for just a moment to respond to those comments?
Okay.
If not, don't worry, that's fine.
Um, sure.
We're not really. I realize I realize we're well out of protocol. Um, but. The question was specifically about whether the property owners were not just in favor of reopening the trail, but whether they were generally amenable to that up slope movement of the trail. And so those comments both said, yes, we want the trail reopened, but I. Was talking to my expand and say whether they were also willing to include. Those that up slope removal.
My opinion on that, you're welcome to answer, but I think that's more discussion between city. And then as a as a property discussion, kind of outside what our discussion is tonight, that's in my opinion. I don't know if anybody feels differently. What's a?
Okay, I think I think that makes sense. Uh. Uh, yeah, I don't know if that's what we need to get into this evening.
Yeah, just I'm comfortable getting into property discussion negotiations in this form because that's absolutely not our purview. Got it. Okay. All right. So any other questions, Richard, for Trevor on the staff report? I think it's where we were.
Hey, bear with me just a second here. Um, no, I I, um. As I said earlier, unfortunately, we're not going to solve the Van Wijk Trail problem this evening. Um, and my editorial comment is that. Uh, I don't think we really have much of a recourse other than to extend the uh. TDP for the closure and emphasize to all parties that are involved to. Please, uh, work as collectively together as we possibly can to make this happen. So.
Okay.
For solution, whatever that solution would be.
Um, yeah, I have a question. So. From the time that the trail was closed four years ago. And then such appeal to the coastal commission, it's my impression that during that appeal period, the trail should have remained open. But it did not.
Yes. So basically the appeal to the coastal commission. Um, would have stayed or invalidated the city's um. Action, but the coastal commission purposely did not force the city to reopen it. Again, hoping that the city was going to continue to work on finding. Part of it was COVID, you know, a part of it was just it was complicated and that didn't.
I guess my response to that, I guess. I don't feel like the city should have been waiting for the coastal commission to tell them to reopen it because. My impression that that would have been. Proper procedure. And. So in this instance, the. Did not follow proper procedure. So I to that, I just say like, what gives? I mean, who's? I mean, the coastal commission maybe should be policing the city, but they didn't. But like, somebody should be.
Well, so I think what would have happened if the city had. Been forced to open it, the coastal commission would have taken actions. Because I think everybody recognized that. We couldn't have just leave it open in its current condition.
I.
You're right, it was not proper procedure.
I guess I think as a member of this community. You know, when you just when I do something that's improper and everyone knows about it. It comes down on me, but there's nothing coming down. I'm just. This behavior.
Richard, Tom?
Look, so coming from the hotel community last night. Um, anything that was being prepared since. And will. Ask for the maybe just. And close the trail to the rest of the. To the tourists, everybody knows this is how you have to go, Edward's and go down, but. Maybe that would take a lot of pressure off. It wasn't on a map that risks basically ending the trail.
That's a very good point. Um, it wouldn't, it still wouldn't. You know, the city would still not have liability coverage. So again, we can't allow. You know, we can't open it for locals either, or we're the city's open man itself up to, you know, serious liability issues. Um, but that's definitely one of the things we are discussing. In that, you know, even if we move the trail up slope, I think the idea would be to. That would be a local trail and that tour visitors would be directed to Edward Street with them. And looking at some short-term options that can be. You know, changing the width of lanes a little bit to to give a bigger shoulder, you know, additional striping and maybe some sort of ballers or rumble strips. So and so we are looking at some things that could be installed relatively quickly.
I've got a couple of questions. So the, I can't find my words at the moment, but the. Extension of the closure officially expired March sixth?
Yeah.
Is the trail currently closed?
Signs are not removed.
It's officially the trail. The signs are not present, at least as you come down today from Edwards. The only sign present today when I walked up to take a look is the notice of the extension of the CDP, that application.
To win vote.
Yeah, so I guess, I mean, my, this is this is getting back to, I think, uh. Trust in point a little bit, you know, if if in fact the. Trail is officially closed under under what authority is it closed at the moment? I'm wondering what authority has been closed for the last.
Maybe it hasn't been posted and the city is just exposing itself to risk.
And I mean, there's there's so much, you know, public interest in this topic. It's, uh. You know, my limited time here is to garner the most engagement with the community. That's these are tough decisions to make, right? Like judging and. Weighting public interest versus, you know, priceless cultural resources and so on and so forth. And. Considering that sort of burden and that drain on Van Wijk, so I'm wondering. Is there vote on this like largely symbolic procedural? Like if the trail cannot be reopened. Without exposing the city to unwarranted. Liability, is the city going to find some way to keep it closed regardless of how we vote tonight?
I think I think that, um. You know, I don't know exactly what the process would be, if it would staff appeal or or we'd ask a city council member to appeal, but I think we. If you denied it, I think we can take that to the.
Right, the council could be.
Um, uh, trail closure could be appealed. I don't, if they, if they, so if you denied it. And that was appealed and they upheld your denial in effect of the trail, I don't think that would be appealed.
That's good. Yeah, um. So it seems like there's this sort of paradigm developing where where the Van Wijk Trail and Edwards are being considered to be like sort of. Parallel means of accessing coastal resources. Wondering if at any point a project on. In on Edwards that affected public views was approved. Because there was still views possible from the Van Wijk Trail.
Awesome. Though I doubt that would have been really a deciding factor. But that's possible. It was a consideration.
I'm just thinking about like the sequential series of events, right? Like if if this closure. Um, and then my last question is about, uh, what seems to me to be. A reasonable solution, sort of a secondary, if you will, trail that Van Wijk was low recreational use. But I'm wondering how that's enforceable. I mean, people are going to find themselves on a trail that is most enjoyable with this. Versus so. So you might expect.
Yeah, I think it would be, you know, it would just be like, like Tom said, would be just unmatched. We wouldn't have our text. And so and and, you know, it might even have maps or arrows that point to Edwards. Once we get some pedestrian improvements that would encourage visitors to go that way. Um, but no, it wouldn't be closed if a visitor found themselves down there. So it would just be.
Right. It comes down to the fact that a street is not a trail, right? I think that no matter how much signage does or does not exist. Adventurous public is going to find themselves. I have no editorial comments later, but nothing else for Trevor.
Okay, um. The one just question, I have some comments as well. Um. I guess the first one is, to the best of your knowledge, because this I wasn't. Very engaged yet and it was on the planning commission. Did the city explore alternative insurance methodologies for this trail? Just because the one group said no. Did they ever? Check to see if Nationwide was on our side? Or I mean, I can't imagine somebody else would take the liability on, but was any kind of due diligence done by the city? Given your tenure or Richard?
I believe there was back in when this was originally proposed, but I don't have those details. And unfortunately, you guys did none.
Yeah.
Midterm tonight.
Yeah, I'm disappointed he couldn't make tonight. Um, okay. Um, and then I'm trying also just, uh, in the staff report, you talk about the uh. TMT meeting on February twenty ninth and it was productive discussion. And you in your paragraph where there was general consensus that abandoning the existing trail alignment is the best course of action. And then we go into the big however section that's bolstered by the encouraging letter from the TAS saying. So there was general consensus to close, but subsequent to that, we've now. There seems to be consensus about possibly doing the lighter use trail and keeping.
Yes, for the up slope options.
Right, which I just, I'm not going to hold you to numbers, but I mean, the existing path is here. I mean, moving it X number of yards up slope, basically still. Below Edwards, below the residences, right?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. I just meant the existing. Trail. I I, you know, I I think. The Yurok tribe and the ancestral society are pretty, um. Adamant that they do not want any work there and they don't want that open and. They have, um, convinced coastal commission staff that as well. So I think that we would have to look at up slope. Alignment is is the option.
I was trying to. Reconcile. That we're staying with that. We're not deviating. We're not pursuing a pathway and. I'm not making a vote pending hope on something that isn't, doesn't have the support of the stakeholders have been involved so far. Which leads me to my next question for you is there were a couple of public comments about, um. Not feeling that we're capturing everybody that we want to with having input on this process and. What has, again, this precedes my tenure on the commission, what was done in the past and what can we do moving forward? Since you're more privy to the meetings, the ongoings than we are. To ensure that we're, I don't know, reaching out not at least to the Trails Committee, but members of the public that have the vested interest.
Yeah, you know, I think that, I mean, it's something that could occur either both at the planning mission level or the city council level. And I think that that's important. Um, you know, I think it's also important that, um, you know, staff do some background work. In in the background to, you know. Come up with some feasible kinds of alternatives. Um, but on the other hand, you know, there might be things we don't think about that the public would bring up too. Um, so yeah, I have no objection to. Uh, helping with a discussion about.
Would you see a problem with the condition requesting a workshop or something as this goes forward?
Yeah, you know, I think, um. You know, I was going to suggest if if you want to send, you know, something like a formal resolution, I would like to work on the wording potentially. And maybe, I don't know if we can do that tonight, but you could also just do it as a recommendation that the city council. Have a workshop or some kind of public forum, um.
Those are all my questions that I have. Uh, we'll open up to public comment. We'll start with online. Just to start somewhere. Anybody? Might have anything, if not anybody in the room care to come up and offer any comments on this subject?
Hi, I'm Kelly White. I live here in Trinidad. Thank you all for your service here tonight, listening to this topic. Um, I'm really hoping you don't think so, you know. I think it's. Obviously, the city's just been sitting on their hands for this for a long time. I was here, you know, the last meeting that we had about the Van Wijk Trail and. Um, you know, the whole coast of California was inundated last year with storms. And trails were washed out all up and down coast of California. We made that trip last March. Um, we were at every state park, we were in every city from Capitol all the way down to. Um, to each, all the trails were being repaired. But really, um, do you not understand the jurisdiction of the tribes on city trails? And that's never really been explained. Um, the jurisdiction that we're not going to repair a trail, we're not going to build a trail when. The coast of California. When the coast of California has a coastal commission, public access is the number one reason that the coastal commission exists. When I hear the actual planning commission in my town talking about somehow squirting public access and opening up trail to a limited number of people or not allowing, you know, um, everyone to use it, that's a concern that I have as well. This is a public trail, like all public trails. Having been on a land trust for years, lots of property owners wanted to make trails only for their friends. That's not how it works. Um, I really think that, uh, you know, we all know that the closed trail raises substantial issues with the coastal act and the LCP. And we all know that it's on record that many trails in this town want to be closed by certain entities, not just the Van Wijk Trail, the unpaid portion. Um, and so this is setting a precedent. We have to look at that. Nothing's been done. There has been no public meeting to say, here's what we looked at. We're all finding out that, oh, we've been meeting with the coastal commission, um, every month. Where's the public record for that? That's all public record. If the city's meeting with the coastal commission, we should have notes for that. You should have notes for that. What's being discussed? I don't see any of that in pockets tonight, so that's a big concern. But the temporary closure is not the narrative in the town. The narrative in the town, the mumbles on the street, or that that's trail's been permanently closed for a long time. That was stated to me recently by a city council person. That's really a huge cavern in the city process and public process. We have trails committee meetings, we get a few notes, they're about things that aren't about trails anymore. They're about benches and other items. I have, I've been working on this trail for years. I can't get the information that I need. Edwards is not an option, even with a sidewalk. You have people pulling out backwards, you have people pulling in on a busy street. I don't want that. I walk the Van Wijk Trail every day. People that are in worse physical shape than I do walk the Van Wijk Trail every day. There's snow fence for a long time. If you've read the appeal to the coastal commission, you'll see pictures of that snow fence. You'll also see pictures of traffic on Edwards. The trail is usable, it's walkable, it's being used. It should not be. Oh, well, we have some liability. Other trails in the city are also, we have liability too. Now, the absolute trails. You know, Parker Street, Parker Creek, they all have issue. Put a state park up there, you go out to Aggie Beach, guess what? You're going to be sliding in the goo. It's the way it is. I really hope that you, um, don't leave this trail and keep that go permanently closed. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dick Bruce, and I turned in some public comment this afternoon. But I'd like to read into the record tonight, and you can ask any questions, comments that I made into the record if that's Van Wijk Trail with both city residents and visitors, coastal views and planned pedestrian access to the harbor and state beach. Oh, officially temporarily closed since 2020. It continues to be actively used by many who would rather use the failing section of the trail to enjoy the views. Deal with the traffic on the edge of the street. Is apparent this continued use of the public, which is a trail. City has now had four years to come up with a plan to repair. According to the staff report, it sounds like one of the main stumbling blocks is concern over servants' potential effect on significant cultural resources in and around the trail area. I question this assertion. The staff is well aware in November of 2020, to contract with Wall and Construction to do an emergency repair and overground rerouting of water lines in stormy rainwater under Van Wijk Trail. And no cultural resource. On the afternoon of November 16th, 2020, I was personally onsite and watched and filmed a significant part of this work. Contractor utilized a mini excavator to dig out the underground water connections at the top and bottom of the trail. Depths approaching four feet. But shallow or protrange were to go around to install. I spoke with both the job foreman and the onsite cultural monitor and asked if anything had been uncovered. And the cultural monitor told me that nothing had been found. And if the excavated soil appeared to be quote mostly filled from previous construction activities. assertion that significant tribal cultural resources would be disturbed by repair and reopening of the trail were Shortly after the repair work was completed, I contacted the city manager and at that time, current councilman, Richard Clark, was to ask the city to of the cultural monitor's report to inform future decisions regarding also to see all members of the city council. End result was that, quote, reports are confidential and kept by the tribe during the observation. It's only logical to assume that if any significant cultural resources have been found to be endangered, that either the Yurok tribe or the TAS could now be bringing this forth in support of their stated positions. Currently permanently closed. Time. That report also states, city is currently working with landowners up slope of the failed section of the trail and other stakeholders to try to reach an agreement for moving the trail up slope. But to my knowledge, the public is not involved in any of this. If you use the trail, share it with stakeholders, why are we not involved in this conversation? There are many options available to do either minor or major repairs to keep the trail open. Major soldier power wall work required in the now defaulted downtown grant plans is not necessary. Other less invasive repairs should be investigated. The past supervisor, the drones offered the help with design suggestions based on his What about the awkward steel stands is worth investigating? Died application for another six months temporary closure, CDP proof, least conditioned and likely to admit book of all stakeholders. Inform staff of the wishes of the public. Potential suggestions open. Continue to provide coastal access away from the heavenly. I have a couple of other things. As to other potential repairs. Based on the cultural monitor's report back in 2020, indicated that what he thought at that time is mostly filled. I think it's fairly safe to at least touch me. That road area that slipped away, the unmade roadway area. If the city did minor repairs in terms of putting in my geyser holes, I've had some experience with that on my own. Drop fill. In the area that's slipped away now, you can do some minor excavation, hang your wire geyser, fill them with rock. Block mats, build it up. Wouldn't have to build it up too much. You could build it up enough. So you could have some minor steps put in. Coming down the areas that beginning and the end that the slope is following. That's a very simple repair. I think the land trust has done things like that all over their trail. The other thing that I've got some experience with is a railcar. You wouldn't necessarily need a railcar bridge there. When I brought this up with the council back in 2020, even the city engineer said, oh, no, we can't do anything like that because the grant money from Caltrans, we have to have seismic studies and so put a railcar bridge in our property upon the San Antonio River. It was funded by, um, agriculture. Uh, all we needed was minor concrete, concrete abutments at either end with minor excavations. Wouldn't have two foot down to set those concrete abutments now and put in fact a very large rip off a bridge. You wouldn't need a railcar bridge. You could put in a pedestrian bridge with minor concrete abutments at either ends. I sent to the city back in 2020, links to companies that produce it. I'm in total agreement with Cal, meaning that the city is totally buffoed by Yurok tribe and the TAS claiming there's these cultural resources. There are worthy evidence. If they've got it, I'm certainly willing to take a look at it and say, okay, we should abandon that trail. But nobody's presented that. So I strongly encourage the city to get to work on finding a solution to reopen the trail. You don't need a major improvement. You could do it with minor approvals, let the public have better access and way from that busy and restricted. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, Bryce Kenny. Been here many times, seen most of you fellows. And as usual, I want to thank you for volunteering your time. You know, I think if I was sitting in your seats tonight, I would vote no on this. As, as a way to, you know, and then it would end up in front of the city council, but I think that would be good to really galvanize attention to it. Allow other members of the public to weigh in on this and send a message that you as a body do not approve of the way this has unfolded. It's tremendous abuse of the English language. For your closure and just call it temporary and keep extending it for six months and another six months and another six months. Under the guise of a temporary closure, this is your chance to send a message. You know, the, the trail itself is an important cultural resource. It's important to the culture that appreciates and wants to experience the natural beauty of Trinidad. And they want to do so in a way that invokes the most ancient manner of transportation there is. Not as simply walking on earth. That's all we're asking, you know. Be able to continue doing here. It's very puzzling to me why the, um, tribe management team is involved in this process. Their purview is the 12 acre tribe study area, which this is not a part of. So I think there's been some unnecessary delay occasioned by involving them when it's really not appropriate. If you do end up voting yes for this extension, I just ask that you use your positions of power and influence to press somehow upon the city council that you, you want to see this resolved in a, uh, a faster fashion than it's been, than it has been where the can just keeps getting kicked down the road for another six months. Thank you.
Anybody online? Zoom in. So is your opportunity for public comment? They're muting themselves. I'll bring it back to the commissioners then for more discussion. You know?
Um, yeah, I, uh, I want to thank the public for their comments this evening. And I appreciate that. Uh, I wanted, I guess, I'm going to take the stance that this, this discussion about having like the Edwards Street be some sort of alternative or the Van Wijk Trail be at long term or short term is like, I mean, that is not an acceptable alternative. Walking on Edwards Street, even if it has a sidewalk, especially a sidewalk on the north side, the less scenic side is really just like a pretty pathetic alternative, uh, to having the trail. And the only alternative that I would support is moving the trail up slope. However many to to move it away from quote unquote sensitive, um, cultural resources. And I guess also reading through this and reflecting on, I was obviously not on the commission back in 2020, but reflecting on the Axolí Memorial Trail and sort of how that process has played out over the past year. And equally frustrating, um, with a lack of progress from the city. Um, in terms of coming up with alternatives and ways of reopening the trail. Um, I, I mean, it does seem like we need to take a different approach than sort of this waiting seat until somebody comes up with hopefully an answer that doesn't.
Who else?
Yeah, I have some comments and and you know, this, um, again, my relatively brief tenure, we have seen parallels between the Van Wijk Trail closure and the Parker Creek Trail closure. And, and I do appreciate the the priceless nature of, of cultural resources and I certainly acknowledge that, uh, that the tri village is the center of the universe, um, for many, many people. But in both of these instances, with the Van Wijk Trail and the Parker Creek Trail, uh, Trail. It seems to me that there are natural processes occurring which are causing the bulk of the movements and damage and potential exposure of those cultural resources. With the Parker Creek Trail, it was wave action down the beach. In this case, of course, it's this slump earth flow, right? That slump earth flow is going to keep happening regardless of whether people are walking atop that. It's landslide. It's already taken out for retaining it. I just want to sort of highlight that, that while, while walking on that earth flow might, you know, uh, contribute to or exacerbate erosion, it is not the underlying cause of, you know, it's not the underlying cause of failure of that segment of the Parker Creek Trail. And as entities are having discussions about, you know, potential solutions. I think that underlying problem must be accepted, right? That earth is moving towards the sea because of what we're walking atop it. And so sort of with that being said, I wanted to reference the staff report, um, and the discussion of policy five of the regional plan that says, uh, where access trails must traverse steep slopes, they should be located away from unstable areas and improvements should be provided to minimize erosion and slope failures. Uh, existing trails which are creating these problems are either be improved or closed. Um, this project is consistent with this policy. And I'm not sure that that's true. Um, I'm not sure that it is the, the trail itself which is contributing as the underlying positive factor to be erosion and slope failures. So I, I don't know that I agree that the project was consistent with. That's all I've got to say.
What do you think?
I'd say I'm giving it uphill on top of the pipe. We're keeping the go trail, keep, keep the main bulk of the terrace going wherever it can go safely or any of it. And, uh, it just, it's open, but it's not officially open to the public or it's just not on map. We're talking about putting maps with Q, QR codes and putting, you know, putting it all over and, and yeah, I don't think it's ever going to be where you can really, it's just a trail. It's a little go trail. And there is a pipe. When you move above the pipe, that pipe's going to be continued to be that's going to stay. And so that's what I'm pushing for. And so that's what I'm pushing for. And I didn't know if it was in the 12 acres or not. Just clarification. And thank you for everybody here is in support of it. Definitely all the public. Thank you. From now.
You good as a matter?
Yeah. Just stand. Thanks for all the comments from everyone. I think it's important that everybody have an opportunity to uh, weigh in on this. And I guess I'll just make some editorial comments that have already said one way or the other. I think the city has really just dropped the ball completely on this. And um, I'm embarrassed for the city in the way in which they've handled this. It's it's uh absolutely unconscionable that that the city has not, with four years, has not been able to come up with a viable plan. Now, I admit that there was a plan. As we all know, back in 2017, I think it was, that was um, like the plan. Uh, and um, and the and the and the public reacted to it that way. And I think that made a lot of sense. I think that the focus that I see for many of the indigenous organizations has more to do with erosion than cultural uh artifacts or cultural issues, only because if you look at the letter uh that the ancestral society sent, there's nothing in there about cultural artifacts that being an issue. It's all about erosion and possible damage to the uh study area itself. And and as I said earlier, we have to bear in mind, there's no project in front of us tonight. I mean, it's it's a yay or nay, really, when you think about it. I mean, all of the things that we've talked about and all the wonderful suggestions that we have heard tonight have to be done at a later date in an environment where we can come together, reach some sort of collective agreement that this is the right thing to do. And then I I agree with some of the comments that were made. I think that the transparency with respect to how this has been handled, I'll go back to my other comments about how the city has handled it, but I would include other organizations as well, that um, the public has not had an opportunity to weigh in since the big debacle in 2017. I could be wrong on that, but that was the last point that I recall where the public had really an opportunity to discuss a project. Uh, and right now there's no project in front of us. Uh, there are some recommendations. There are some, there is, and I'm optimistic about this. I am very optimistic about the opportunity that we might be able to move the trail forward or up the up the slope. And um, I I would certainly hope that all parties involved in that do their best and even to be of beyond that to make that happen, or at least come to agreement that we can all look at and make some sort of collective assessment as to whether or not that meets the requirements. I I admit I'm hesitant though to say no to the extension. And and the reason is that um um, I I I'm not sure that that gains anything other than, yes, it might open up the trail, but um, I I just think that that's not the way to go in this case. I'm cautiously optimistic that there are some things in work that will will uh pan out. And I am willing to, I guess, give us another six months or so to to uh make that happen. It's not an easy thing to decide. There's just so many issues to this and it's been so controversial for a very long time. And there are lots of entities that have to be involved in this. So I guess the bottom line I'm saying is that I'm really upset with the city. I think that we should go to the next city council meeting and we should express our displeasure with them and say, hey, guys, you guys got to get your act together. We're going to give you six months and that's it. And you better have a plan. And um, I think if we all weigh in during a city council meeting, it'll be on record uh in the in the city council meeting that I hope that would go some uh way or some distance in um getting the city council to get off top dead center. I'm tired of this. I've been on this council, this planning commission for 19 years. And uh, Van Wijk has always been right there. It just seems like it's always there. So I'm willing to give them six months, but I'm also going to be at the next council meeting. I'm going to tell them this is ridiculous. You've wasted our time. And it's time to uh put together the plan and execute the plan, involve the public with as much transparency as maximally possible. And let's get on with it. My thoughts.
Um, I'll, thank you. I'll try and be brief. Uh, no, 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 no. Um, I this, this is not my happy place when we start discussing trails because my short tenure in town and on the planning commission and briefly on the trails committee. This is rinse, repeat, rinse, repeat, rinse, repeat. We are heading down the same path time and time again. Uh, I'm particularly concerned about the Van Wijk Trail uh because I I agree an option to move it exclusively up to Edward is complete is to me completely unacceptable. Um, because combine that with the loss of Galindo Trail, which either has happened, hasn't, but isn't. I mean, that's a whole separate. We we lose the ability to walk right on the coastline or practically near it without having something between us. And so that's not acceptable for me. Um, I'm really disheartened and disappointed that the city manager wasn't able to resolve a conflict and be here tonight for this discussion. I think this is a particularly important uh topic. Um, and I'll I'll mention that to him next time I see him. Yeah, it it's it's really disappointing. Um, the 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 city has dropped the ball without question on this in the short time I've been paying attention to this. This has been in front of me and I'm I'm frankly very tired of it. Something needs to happen. The solution needs to happen. I will say also during the short time that I've I've been around this, the movement that has happened, at least from a discussion standpoint, the information coming back that there are uh groups are working together. I'm encouraged by that. I'm not um completely sold that we're going to get there, but there's now conversations happening about, well, maybe moving it up slope would be acceptable. Um, similar conversations we're going to have about the next agenda item as well. So yeah, I'm 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 literally right now on the fence with where to go on this.
Uh, I want to follow up on Richard's comment. About bringing this to the city council. Um, I I mean, I agree, we should all be commenting on it there, but I think effective, more effective way than just in items from the floor to comment on is to actually get it agendized by.
Agreed. Yeah, yeah. Uh, that's fine. Yeah, even better.
So that way they have to respond to your comments, or at least have to take half the time to set aside for the comments.
I've got a couple of questions for staff. Um, I'll say prepare how to vote. There is a kind of inform myself on how to vote. Um, and related to that topic, uh, you know, we tried to to flex our muscles to limited extent that we could by requesting these monthly updates about trail closures because Richard, we suggested not just this body receive those updates, but the council as well. I'm wondering if that's that's happening, correct? The council has received updates about trail closures.
Believe it's in the Eli stack. I don't know if it's actually. Just.
It's not to this, my, just to answer my response, the few council meetings I've attended recently, it's not to the same level that our reports are.
Yeah, sure. So in the, I guess my point would be that the public just be commenting there, right? It is sort of, it's the report theoretically exists every month. Um, I would encourage the public to the comments uh during those meetings and specifically during those monthly updates uh as well. The other question I've got for Trevor is uh, it's just, I'm just now noticing that this is not technically an extension of the closure. It's a sort of de novo temporary closure of the trail.
Yeah, so um, it was not warranted to allow an extension like Axalumgram was. So it required a new for slow development. So notices went out, notices were posted, um, which is a little bit different. Um, like to include a similar condition. So it potentially be extended. I'm hearing that. They're affiliated upon. Yes, so this is a
That's the type, that's the type of question usually uh Richard's bread and butter. So I'll invite him to join in with me. Um, if so, if we vote no, it is applicable to the council. The trail remains open or closed during that period of time?
Probably remains empty. So the city's open signs out, but it sounds like there's not closed signs on there.
It exposes the city to financial liability and therefore provides some incentive to find something that works as a safety. Um, something that's not happened since I've been on uh the commission is delaying action or continuing the hearing to obtain further information. So I'm hoping that maybe somebody with some experience there might explain that option to me and how that might come to fruition, if that was the way that we went tonight. Again, I mean, we don't have plans in front of us. We don't have a whole lot of solutions in front of us. We are making uninformed decisions.
I think we're just trying to decide whether or not we want to close it for the next six months or not. Given the, given the current conditions, I guess. And all the input from the.
It seems like the city council, they me, they they may be able to decide if this trail is going to be one degree, if it's going to be ADA, if it's going to be how how it's going to be.
Can we delay action and put it on the council agenda without actually voting yes or no ones?
I believe we can do that.
I don't think I recommend that. I mean, could it continue and be appealed? Yeah, I I would say it would be better for you to vote no, because I think, I think Tom's point, it you 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 open it up to the city, the liability, and that's a city council decision.
The comment I have just, I haven't seen the delay, you know, for additional that I can recall. Um, but for me, I don't know what I would ask for to hope to have within a month. You know what I mean? I would delay if there was something more, something unclear in the code or that kind of thing. I don't know. For me personally, that delaying would really accomplish. I mean, I, I, there hasn't been a plan in four years. I don't think there's going to be one a month if we delay it for a month for me. You know, it's been six months since the coastal commission said, okay, we can begin tolling that initial 2020 closure, correct, Trevor? And they're expecting substantial, right? The 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 original closure got the the toll, the time tolling on that got delayed, right? Until the coastal commission, whatever the action they took. So basically September, the six months started. That's why we're here again today, because now we finally started beginning counting six months that was approved in 2020. And I don't, I was going to ask, you know, they want to see substantial progress. Does this, does discussions about these vague possibilities, is that going to meet the test for the coastal commission? As a citizen, I would certainly hope not.
Um, well, I guess I've seen, so you know, there were um, you know, there were a lot of strong statements made by coastal commissioners. Staff and so staff followed through with that. And, you know, they've, they've been, you know, our meeting includes, our meetings often include five or six coastal commission staff members, including their enforcement official, um, and and some other higher higher folks. Um, so they really, they're pretty serious about, you know, making the city make some progress. Um, it hasn't always been as fast as everyone would like. Um, I think coastal commission staff are relatively pleased with the progress that has been made so far. I think they they would have liked to have seen some improvements on Edwards already. Just and I I understand that you don't consider that as an alternative, but you know, I think it's regardless of whether the trails moved up slope, it may not last forever. And I think there should be the district improvements on that. That's something the city can pursue outside of this process. But anyway, and and I think and it's you know, and I I yeah, I hear what's being said about the cultural resources and it's you know, it's it's a difficult issue. It's it's not an easy issue and there's not always necessarily proof. Um, but I think the state's direction has been more towards more equity and um, you know, that is something I think that coastal commission staff have considered. They met with um, the ancestral society and your tribe without the city. Um, and coastal commission staff came out of that and kind of went up their chain of command, talking about that. And I think they they have concerns about cultural resources. So I think, you know, I think the initial in September, it was like, okay, city, you have to find a repair for this trail. And now it's like, you have to find a culture to this. So, um, you know, even that has evolved in the last six. And you know, I, you know, it's where does it end? You know, in terms of trail closures, I, you know, it it's not uneasy. It's just, it's not uneasy. But I I am encouraged that we are making progress every month, but things just don't happen.
For four years.
I, you know, I, you, you are absolutely correct that, you know, that I think the city, I think the city was waiting for the coastal commission to take action and then COVID hit and it just just got dropped and no one, no one pushed it. No one talked about it and they dropped the ball. But in September, they're making strides.
Why, uh, why is that when things are happening in September?
That's because the postal commission took their action. So basically they found those substantial issues, so which means they didn't take the appeal, which means it started that city's six month. And and they basically directed the city saying, we want to see some progress in six
I think that's a, that's a good point, that the way we've described it tonight, there is nothing standing in the way of the city to really be aggressive about resolving the condition of the trail. There's no outside entity that is saying, well, we have to think about it or anything like that. It's all up to the city at this.
I mean, other than the tribes.
Well, I'm I'm looking at the city to be, if you will, kind of the the person that pulls together every, all the stakeholders in this and re-energize that group and for them to make this a high priority. Um, yes, I understand that there are other organizations and the public has got to weigh in on this too, of course. But I mean, it's not like they have to wait for any state level entity to tell them what to do. It's up to them.
Yes, yes. It's in the city's, it's in the city's lap. Yes.
Target has been for some time.
One could argue that their excuse was that they were waiting for the coastal commission to weigh in on this as well. But um, I I think that we're beyond that.
Yeah. All right. What is the commission's pleasure? Um, sure, we can, yeah, we'll reopen public comment. Mr. Claude, put your hand up.
Oh, hi again. Thank you. I want to LA some of the concerns um, and be more precise with my language. Um, the three of us who are immediately adjacent to the trail, um, when we say we are, we support the trail, as I'm making air quotes, um, we do support going up slope. um, when we say we are, we support the trail, as I'm making air quotes, um, we do support going up slope. So I just want to put that anxiety kind of, um, try to help with that. Now, I personally think of it as being pushed back into the embankment, but I guess that's technically quote unquote up slope. And so then the details of it all, um, we haven't um, seen any drawings or plans or proposals, even though we've all verbally said, sure. So I just wanted to say that because I know that was a big concern in, in tonight's discussion. And because we're all here, we have this opportunity for the first time in a long time to all be together. I just wanted to put that out there, um, very specifically about the difference between supporting the trail and going up slope. And I'm open for questions now too, if you have questions for me.
I don't think we do. Thank you very much for that clarification. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So what is the pleasure of the commission? We can, uh, make an attempt at the existing motion. We can deny the project and provide a motion that gives some findings or explanation as to why we're doing that. We can consider delaying or continuing if we feel that is. Just to, the six-month Trevor, just because that's our standard ask?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think originally, I think originally in 2020, we asked for two years.
We got four, so.
Well, I'll just throw it out there and then we can figure out what the vote will be. Uh, make a motion based on the application materials and information included in the staff report and based on public testimony. I find that the project is consistent, they certified LCP and Coastal Act and other applicable regulations. And I move to adapt the, adopt the information and findings in this staff report and approve the project as described in this staff report and as conditioned therein. And I would like to add just one additional comment that, uh, the planning commission feels very strongly that it's imperative on the city council to take this issue as a very high priority, work with all the entities involved and the public to reach a solution within this six months.
By condition of approval, the strong urging of.
Uh, just send it, right? Yeah. Yeah, put it in the, yeah.
Would you be amenable to amending your motion with a couple of potential conditions of approval? It's here. All right. Uh, the, the two that are getting me closer is, uh, monthly progress reports. Verbiage is not in here and it is on every other trail closure I've been a part of, which was PCT and, uh, ALMT. And, uh, a third one, I think that the city conducts workshops. And, and I mean that as a condition of approval, not a recommendation, because my fear is that if it's simply a recommendation, the city council can go neat idea, no. Or the city can go neat idea, no. And I think it's imperative that um, the public evolve. And if we don't condition it that wise, they're not held to it. Those would be the two amendments I'd make to motion. Okay.
Would you put a timeframe on the workshops or a number?
Yes, thank you. Um, and I know city staff loves it when we add timeframes to their workload. Um, if, since it's a six-month closure, right? And, and it would need to be.
Every two months?
Workshop every two months?
Could it be specified to make a un, an un, uh, marked goat trail?
Is that more of a?
Having workshops in there becomes a scary thing. We can leave the, uh, both the bikes and wheelchairs. And we, can we say that we're really just going for a goat trail at this point? We're going up slope, goat trail. The least creates a walking, but it's not going to be efficient. That's, that's it. I'm worried about starting to become this, the reason I got shot down last time is it became too big. It became a, you know, two-way bike lanes, everything. If we could just say, hey, this is what we, a goat trail would be fine.
There's the public. They have an opportunity.
I don't, I don't think that's a, I mean, really a feasible option at this point, at least not in six months. Because that would be a lot of funding, so I don't.
That'd just be creating easements to be able to have it and then.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I don't think that it's, I don't think it's going to grow that big. I don't think it can.
Yeah. And so then, yes, I just wanted to, I mean, we don't have to put in there, but it becomes a big thing, but it should just be a small thing. It should be just a simple trail. That's not an ADA. It shouldn't, you know, but keep it simple.
I hear you, Tom, and I agree with that sentiment. I would be hesitant to put a restriction on a workshop that is designed to solicit public input. If somebody comes in with an, you know what I mean? I would have a hard time supporting that aspect. I don't see this trail getting any bigger than that. That, I mean, it was before and it was brought back down and the, it was, the community said no. Council listened to the community at that time. Does that make sense? But I mean, I, I agree with your sentiment. It doesn't need to be bigger. I don't think it should be bigger personally.
Can I add one more clarification? Can the workshops be at the regular city council meetings?
No. I, for me, for, for my amendment to the motion, no. I, I'd like them to be a separate standalone workshop. They're not held to the same standard. Uh, there's not the same limitations on what can and can't be discussed. I think that restricts discussion to a certain extent. With the potential to so we're not support that clarification.
I have a question with the motion as it is currently laid out.
Um, it's not clear to you anymore?
Well, the part that's not clear to me is that when we, when we approved previous trail closures, we approved a suite of other things like fencing and signage and all that sort of stuff. And there's none of that here. So if we do indeed vote tonight to close the trail, then how do we close it? Do we also need to include language about that type of stuff that we've dealt with in the past?
So you.
So I mean, I, I'm just trying to understand ramifications of voting yes in support of the project. It's an important aspect of the project.
So I guess to clarify, please, if I'm not, if I'm misstating somebody else's say, but right now the motion does not include any of that. So if we go with the existing motion, we're providing no specificity or guidance to the city on how to close the trail and that it should be closed.
I reckon do we need to, I suppose, is the question.
I thought they were trail close signs up. Um, apparently that's not the case. I'm not aware that really the status quo needs to change. That was not suggested or specified.
Well, I think. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I don't think you can add it tonight as part of the motion tonight. I think, I think the key with the Axel Lindgren trail closure is that, um, you know, there, there, there was more potential exposure of resources there and that, you know, that was really the key off that trail. For, for that reason, I think I haven't heard from, from anyone that they want to do anything more.
It combines the two trails with their different. Axel Lindgren is, that's our next, next one, right?
Yes.
There is an update of that.
Yes.
Focus on Van Wijk. And like, that's the one that out, out of the area, that the sensitive area and just.
Well, adjacent to the 12.
Yeah, I want to be, I want to be sensitive to it.
Yeah, I was just explaining the difference as to why that one needed the structural closures.
Yeah. But that's where it all started. So this, start talking about one trail and then the others come up and then suddenly Parker comes up and all. That is, I just want you to.
So do you still have concerns? Are you wanting to amend the amended motion or?
Uh, I don't, it doesn't sound like it's feasible. It's like awful. I mean, an awful lot of things aren't feasible. But yeah, my point, like, I think the, my concern is clear. I was just wanting to show this, you know, what in fact a closure is, is it a closure in name only? Is it a closure with signs and fences and all of that, like previous closures that we've just, that we've discussed back then? I mean, what do we? Providing a closure, what do you mean by closure?
Well, uh, uh, not to nitpick, but basically our task tonight is to either extend, I'm sorry, either approve a new CDP or not. How it's executed is, that's true. That's a, that's a dilemma, but I'm just trying to stay on the state now for what we are, what we are tasked to do this evening. And, and certainly say this with a little bit of tongue in cheek, certainly the city can figure out how to do that. But, uh, I just see our, our task is the CDP.
Okay. Is everybody clear on the motion that's before us? As read with two additional conditions, so let's restate monthly progress reports as is our, our, our norm. And then the city conduct workshops every two months.
At regular council meetings.
Yeah. So these workshops, I think I like the idea. I'm afraid that they won't be productive. Cause you don't get, I, I think, I like the idea because I like getting the quote unquote general public involved and commenting on that. But the problem that they're going to come up against is that the tribes are not going to come to those workshops. They're not here tonight. And they seem to have like this extremely tight grip on the city and on its projects. And it's like, you can get everyone together in the room, come up with some great ideas and then it goes somewhere else and the tribes will be like, or I don't know what, but if we're going to have workshops, they need to be in the room in order to have some sort of discussion on these topics. It's my, my feeling. Cause I mean, as things seem to go generally now, it's like the city and the tribes get together and come up, try to come up with some sort of project. And then, and then it comes to the public. And so, and I know you're trying to sort of reverse engineer that, but having the public come with it. That doesn't seem to be how that works.
Yeah, no, I, I hear you. And I guess my comment back would be that it's a choice not to show up at the workshops. It's a choice not to be here tonight. This is the agendas they, they gave us written. I mean, they were here in, in, in writing. Um, and the workshops for me are more just designed to create an opportunity because there's, I've heard from the public that there's not, they're not feeling an opportunity for input. Um, and having tried to provide input at council meetings, that always isn't always the best point because council meetings are where the decision is happening and kind of like, you know, uh, my impression of, of having gone to a number of council meetings is that they listen to a little bit and then the vote happens. I, very rarely do things get continued or pushed off. And, and I don't necessarily know that that would happen in this instance, if that makes sense, without kind of really I don't know. It's another way to apply some firm pressure.
I guess who's, what, what, what's the goal of these workshops, I guess?
Right opportunities for input, um, outside of a meeting format, who's like, who leads them, I guess, or what, what happens to that input?
Well, you know, as I said earlier, I'm cautiously optimistic that we've made some inroads in moving the trail up slope. I, I would think that if I were the city, I would say I need to put together a plan that says, here's how I execute in getting those easements and that agreement in place within the six months. There may be other options which we have to look at at the same time, but right now that looks like the most viable. Uh, you know, there's no easy, you know, no magic bullet here. I mean, it's, it's, you know, we're just going to have to work through this again and again and again, but, um, the ancestral society did send a letter. I think the letter is somewhat conciliatory in that they will consider, um, an up slope trail from the current location. That's progress. I, I don't know where that's going to go. Things change, but I, I, I think there are a couple of paths that the city is, is, um, wants to solve this problem. There, there's an opportunity there. Maybe I'm being polyanna, but I'll, I'll do that for a little time.
I'm going to make one more comment on the condition about not being at regular council meetings. I think the city council, it's budget time coming up, um, the water rate's coming up. I think the council's going to have its hands full with two meetings a month already. Um, and I would suggest that, and, and if they want to make a decision to direct staff to do something, it has to be at an agendaized council meeting. I would suggest that they can be at agendaized council meetings. I think it's a, you know, a, and it could even be a monthly agenda item. It's just, you know, public can come and talk. Ideas, um, can be presented and then I think, you know, staff can go back and our staff can be internal staff meetings and report back at, you know, and I go a little. I, I would suggest that they can be it.
It's a good point. I'll modify then, uh, the friendly amendment, uh, that the city conduct. The city put forth an agendaized item at city council meetings on this topic, providing an update, an opportunity for input.
At least every two months?
At least every two months.
Well, i- if we're, if we're going to agenda, uh, uh, agendaize the issue, then I would say that they have to report just like they're doing on the Axel Lindgren trail. Uh, make an agenda item and we'll have to hear it. I mean, we have to put a little bit of teeth in it.
Okay.
I mean, if we give them the opportunity to do it every other month.
Yeah, I mean, basically I think what it could be is, is basically what I've been doing for you, where it's, it's an agenda item every month. There's a report, we have a discussion, it's on the agenda. It's not just buried in Eli's staff report on the second agenda.
And I was just going to make the point that this is, I don't want this, I don't know if you just specified, but this cannot get included in the consent calendar.
So.
Ask to pull it out. That's where I kind of, you know, the, the challenge, if you don't know the rules of the game, it's hard to miss, you know, you have to miss your opportunity to speak.
Well, it's also incumbent on us, the public to say, I want to pull that consent.
Sure.
Agenda item.
Sure.
If they tried to do that, we'll say no.
Yes.
Um, you, but you could, maybe it's just one condition where monthly updates are provided um, by staff um, as a separate agenda item. At council, at council and planning.
Okay. I'm okay with that change. Your original motion.
No, I, I, I think all of these comments are very useful and important. Maybe Trevor should read the whole thing back to us just to make sure that we haven't missed anything or said something we don't want to.
Can we hear the, only the second additional condition? As you have it captured.
Um, so that staff provide monthly updates at both the city council and planning commission meetings as separate, as a separate. city council and planning commission meetings as separate, as a separate agenda item. As its own agenda item.
I like that. I'm wondering if we need specificity to that.
Or I don't know what you mean.
What we want to be in the report. Updates on property negotiations. I mean, I, it should be implied, but I'm not confident that you know, if you're not present for that staff report, that it's gonna capture all the information that I'm hoping that it will. I mean, I'll, I'll try and be present to ask plenty of questions, but um, I, 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 I don't like it when, oh, I'm not prepared to understand that would be asked, so I don't have that for you tonight. So I mean, if we can try one and then see.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm I, I don't think we're gonna be able to cover every single base.
No.
Um, and I think it's incumbent on us and the public to call them out if we don't think they're getting the information that we want. And I know that there's folks here that have no problem of doing that. So, you know, the, um,
You're getting back.
Well, like I said, I'm cautiously optimistic. I'm just hoping that we can, we can get their attention at this point.
Okay. And I'm, I'm good with that. The specificity for now, we can always revisit that. Once or at council meetings. So Richard has read the motion with the first condition and then the second one that Trevor just read out to us. And there is no third, just for clarity. Combine those two.
No, but he's still, still with the addition of the motion that the planning commission strongly recommends the city council regarding work with all stakeholders, including public to come up.
I'm lucky to say anything and I'm sorry, but um, but we've had this exact discussion so many times, right? How do we get somebody to do something? And we were reasonably successful, reasonably successful recently when we got from GHD a list of possible solutions for the ALNT. Can we similarly compel somebody to do something about that? Can we get somebody to compile a list of possible solutions? Since this is in fact a temporary closure designed in theory to expire in six months, is there something we can do to compel a solution that's theoretically ready to get implemented six months from today?
You're suggesting something to fix the existing to condition where it's reasonably safe.
And that's what we did with the, sorry, that's what we did with the ALNT, right? Because sorry, no, it's with the ALNT, right? It's the, what we call the plan B at the time. We planned the war. I had plans for I have a light touch solution.
Okay.
And we'll say that we have done that internally. Did, like I was saying, then, you know, and they sort of calculated, I think it'd be 12 steps on each side, because it's about 12 feet. They should change and then be the the square, like four by four, um, boards with, you know, two to three feet of rebar all nailed in. They suggested best set ground. So we, we did do that and presented that to the management. Yeah.
Very common, right? Yeah. What was their response?
They don't want any gravel. They don't want any rebar. That doesn't mean that, I mean, you know, someone asked about the tribe's jurisdiction and, you know, and we've talked about, um, you know, there are certain areas within the study area that soil disturbance requires approval of the name. This doesn't, um, you know, I think it's, you know, we're trying to find a diplomatic solution. You know, e- either way, um, you know, I think if the city did propose that, um, it was gonna be appealed. So, you know, is there much benefit in, in doing that? I mean, you know, so you can, can take action, um, without approval of the tribes, but, you know, I think that was, that was staff's reasoning.
Okay, um, I feel like we can continue discussing this for a while. So I feel like we should maybe all the questions, so to speak, and just vote on the motion as it is right now and then see where that takes us. Partake with that. Okay. All right. Then let's go ahead and have a vote on the motion as stated. All those in favor, say aye.
Are you gonna second it?
Sorry. Thank you. Of course. Uh, is there a second for the motion?
I'll second.
You made the motion.
Ah, sorry. That's true. I got caught up in all of yours.
Yeah. They're second for the motion as proposed.
I'll second it.
Okay. Moved in second. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
The motion passes three to two. Anybody need a brief, even if they don't, we're gonna take a brief break here.
Yeah. We can meet in, uh,
All right, we are back live. We're gonna call this meeting back into order after our well-earned bio break. Uh, moving on to agenda item number four, which is the second extension of the closure of the ALNT. It's just for clarification, in case anybody has a hard copy, the plan on from home packet page 55 follows now packet page, follows with packet page 45, just for that little minor kerfuffle. Trevor, take it away.
Okay, uh, so since the last, since last month's report, um, we did manage to have a meeting with the TRR management team. Um, so we, we talked about in like as well, um, and I think again, uh, an encouraging response from the ancestral society. Um, while they, they still have provided the city, the GHD's report, um, they, they did express that they plan to do so at a management team in, in the not too distant future and that they are working with the Yurok tribe to develop a temporary trail in the new alignment. So rather than repairing the bottom of the existing trail and you know, putting work and money and effort and possibly more fill and disturbance um, into that alignment that's failing anyway. Um, they are looking at, um, like I said, a temporary trail in the new alignment. So, and I don't, I don't know what that's gonna look like, but we, they, they, they came back and they have requested a meeting for the first week of April. It's arranged. Everybody can be there. I assume they will present that report, um, to GHD. They have RCA, um, joining that meeting as well. So I assume that means they will be the ones building the trail. So they already, so clearly they are doing this, um. There, you know, they didn't wanna put a date. They didn't, they were worried about, you know, specifying Memorial Weekend as, as a deadline. Um, they, they think they can have it open by July. Uh, they would like to have it open earlier, but that's the plan. You know, I, I don't know, you know, the yeah, permitting environmental review through a new trail alignment. You know, I don't know if that's gonna complicate things. Again, we can see what their proposal is and, and discuss what, what options there are. But I, again, I think it's, I think it's positive. Um, and I think we are making progress. And like I said, we already have one of the meeting schedule. So, um, yeah, I think like Richard was saying, cautiously optimistic. Um, and so, you know, again, we can't, it's another situation. You can't open it in its current condition. The slope is just gone at the toe. Um, the, and I just note that the fencing at the top and bottom of the trail was authorized to remain as so that we don't have to, um, we look at that. So staff is recommending a, a four month, um, continuation of the closure, which will take us through July. Um, with basically the same, same conditions that we've had, um, that it's, that it's temporary. Um, it can be extended, um, if you find that substantial progress has been made and then I will continue to provide monthly progress reports. Yes.
Thanks, Trevor. Questions for Trevor?
Just was a little confused about conditions of approval for this. Um, the number one, um, references Parker Creek Trail. Um, is that something that is necessary at this point?
Which one, Rashan, to Parker Creek?
Um, I don't
Oh.
Condition number one. Because the approval is for temporary trail.
Close.
It shall expire.
It should say, it should just be one. Yeah.
Except that we're only suggesting or recommending a four month closure, right?
Yes. And so your, the last extension was four months. So it's basically the same, same condition from the last extension.
Richard, are you looking at just the previous staff reports? About the current staff reports?
Am I?
I think so. Are you on tactic page 52?
Yep.
The current conditions are as tactic page 46. It's just reference material.
It affects the original staff report because that's where the analysis and
I apologize. I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay. Thanks for pointing that out to me. Yep.
Um, uh, in interest of potentially, this sounds promising, I guess I should say, finally. Um, but in the interest of expediting this process, you were just mentioning by middle permit, certainly that might uh, I would, not knowing exactly how it works, but it, it seems like it's something that maybe could be permitted under an emergency permit and then could come to us later, just in the interest of like building it, whatever. If that's a month sooner, great.
I, I think we will look at creative solutions and if the solution isn't controversial, gives us a little bit more wiggle, we're gonna be creative probably. But yeah, I like the idea of an emergency permit.
You mentioned, I made it the zoning, I intended, um, when construction might begin. There's any amendment that's
You did not. I mean, their goal would be and But that it would be open by July, so that would mean construction will take place.
Like we're soon, right? I mean, in our reality, it's not gonna be that complicated.
Yeah, I mean, it's really just the, the base of the trail. And, and, yeah, so I think, I don't know how familiar you are with down there, but my understanding is, um, just to the west of the current base of the trail, the sort of rock outcrop. And that is where the original, um, trail came out. So that's a more stable point. So it's, it's not a significant figure.
I just had a couple, um, on the conditions of approval you mentioned, uh, or in the motion you mentioned, with the elimination of conditions three is shown below. I'm trying to, I went back to the previous staff report, uh, and I don't know what condition, I don't know what we're eliminating, and I just wanted to understand.
Sorry, I probably should have included, so that was the last extension, and you added the third condition that within a, or within a month prior to the expiration, we had to come to you with a plan for reopening.
Gotcha.
And that was that third condition that you put on the last extension.
Yep, okay. Yeah, cuz I didn't write it down on my notebook.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, that wasn't me.
Thank you. And then the other question I have is just maybe for clarity, a little bit to Richard's point, just to, you know, the discussion agenda item that you have up there, references to Parker Creek still in this document, in that very intro, the item. Second extension of temporary closure of the ALMT, Old Home Beach Trail, ALMT, and Parker Creek closures in progress. Parker Creek's reopened, there's no CDP, there's no closure, that's all gone. So I'm just wondering if for clarity, before we can pull that out.
Sure, yeah, you know, I think it was just, um, I think it was just because that was the original CDP and you're extending it, um, but.
Footnote or something just to say, you know. I want anybody to read this and think, oh my gosh, should we be closing PCT again, you know? This, this sounds really encouraging. I was really excited to read this. Optimistic. So yeah.
This is, I think getting out of our jurisdiction once again, shouldn't surprise you there from how I speak, um, but I think, uh, you know, if construction is happening, it might be nice to like, I can't directly, you know, can't, you live for example, because I'm here. But, uh, like, I think there's usefulness to updating signage from, you know, trail temporary close for restoration purposes to trail close for construction. It sounds more dangerous, might be a better deterrent to keeping people out, you know, for restoration.
And also way to tell people, hey, something's finally happening.
Something is happening, yeah.
I mean, you know.
Probably, people pickaxes, pickaxes and shovels my indications as well, but, yeah.
Well, I would assume now an emergency permit doesn't necessarily have to come before you for the work occurs, um, but I, I would guess that it will come before you before, you know, for, for a CDP for the work. Yeah, it's just a little time change.
All right, any other discussion? Enough for public comment then. Say if we still have one member of the public possibly online. If you say anything on this topic, please unmute yourselves. Seeing or hearing anything. I'll bring it back to the commission. Any other questions for Trevor, any other discussion? Or then we'd like to make a motion.
Uh, based on the fact that the current conditions, basically the trail are hazardous and unstable, I move to extend the coastal development permit for the temporary closure. Keep her another four months, that's conditioned in the previous approval with the elimination of condition three, yes, from below. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose extensions, all right, passes unanimously. That's the rest of the meeting does now. Um, okay, that's all of our agenda items for tonight, commissioner reports. Do you have anything else to add on a little trails committee stuff?
Yeah, trail, we got them, we got some goals, but it wasn't a core, so we didn't get anything done, but it was talk and it was pitch and, and maps and colors and how to do posts and just a lot of different things. And then we're gonna meet again next month to hopefully try to get something else done. Uh, so that's really what's going on. Um, they were looking to benches and they had how to, uh, you know, gonna be like basically granting or leasing a bench, you know, and, and, uh, just trying to go for uniformity. Uh, working with the state parks, um, to help with tying the trails down. And, uh, with the, the trail folks hopefully can, uh, tie it a little bit better also with the land trust folks. Anyway, it was, it was encouraging, like something's, something's kind of moving, but we're still open to, you know, more suggestions and, uh, so I, I confirmed with Jack West that, yeah, there's, there is possibility of maybe naming, name changes of the trails or maybe adding on names, names. Uh, we looked closer, you know, like the trail with the Wagner and how to, how to maybe change that around a little bit, or not change the trail, but just signage, because right now you can't even find the trail. Uh, so anyway, it was encouraging, yes, it was encouraging.
Would love to ask, uh, top questions about this. I mean, are there, are there discussions of like meeting trails, interpretive trails, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, cuz I feel like that might ease a lot of tensions, right? If suddenly there's descriptions of why these sacred lands are so sacred, that's.
I thought that a few, a couple of moons ago, we did have, uh, we got feedback that instead of, instead of taking poured concrete, digging a hole and pouring concrete and then setting a post, try and pound it in, just feel forward or some kind of way to just fill in the amount of posts so that we're not just doing this well. So that's what we've been looking into, different signage and then trying to do some interpretive off of that, um. It's happening. It might be too fancy. But we'll see.
One of the, one of the things that, from, from the land trust perspective, just real quickly, is that we have discovered very fast that different tribes do not speak the same language. And consequently, when you talk about interpretive signs, you get into a little bit of an issue as to who takes, which language takes precedent. And we have had a lot of discussions about, uh, the sign at the base of, uh, head trail and also at Hoot Point. It took us two years to resolve the languages, language to use on. That's not to say that people aren't cooperative. They are, but each one has their own literally their own language and it makes it problematic.
But, but, but I was just gonna add, but I think the, the tribal groups have been supportive, you know, they, they have said they would like to see.
Definitely.
The border block trail was, you know, down, that is going to be replaced here shortly. Uh, and so that's, that was part of the whole Edwards, uh, in the crosswalks, you can't even get safer. Kind of move people away from that sharp corner down there, just to, you know, get it over to the lap side and show that, mark that trail better. Um, there was discussion about the trail going up, up to the head. There, there, it's wait, there's been bids for it and hopefully it would they get for six, eleven thousand, et cetera.
You talking about the one from the parking lot or the one?
Yeah, parking lot, yeah.
Nice, that's great.
Um, and that's, that's all gonna be redone down there, you know, so there's a lot of kind of waiting until things are done, but it was good to meet, but we couldn't accomplish anything, but we discussed that.
Richard?
I don't think I have anything.
Um, the only two things I have, there was a water advisory committee meeting, but I missed it. It was in the middle of the city's email transition. Uh, so I'll have to get back to you with what was discussed once I have a chance to, uh, watch that and review those minutes. And the other thing is that, uh, Trevor, myself, the city manager and the mayor were invited to a, uh, meeting with the rancheria. Was that Monday, Trevor? Um, and the, the rancheria, it was just more the rancher was kind of opening their doors to the community to, um, kind of stakeholders in the community, Caltrans was there, DOT, um.
Federal highways.
Civil highways, just kind of. Yeah, county was there, um, supervisor drone was there, just really kind of sharing information and knowledge about the projects they're working on. Um, and the discussion was, was you know, focused on kind of their needs and, and their priorities, but there was a very common theme of the fact that none of us can exist in isolation, there's natural connections between all of us. Um, be it signage, be it road projects, be it transportation, all these things. So it was really actually, I thought, very positive, very encouraging, Trevor, I don't know if you.
Yeah, you know, I think, um, basically, um, the ranchery is getting technical assistance from federal highways and this. Um, and, you know, I think that it was information and the organization main should, main street, I forget exactly what their name is.
Home, home town, America, home state, America.
Yeah.
Main Street America.
Main Street America. And, and they, they sort of funnel funds, um, their, their previous focus has been more historic districts, but they're sort of changing it now a little bit more. And so it's kind of information gathering too, for them to understand all the stakeholders' concerns and needs and issues, not just the rancher is, um, where there's opportunities for, you know, projects with multi-benefits that will, um, increase the likelihood of getting grant fundings. I think that was a lot of the talk is how, how to be competitive for federal grants, tuition grants, which tends to higher populations. So yeah, and I think it was, I think that some of what comes out of it can serve the benefits.
So I'll have first to.
Chris? No. All right. Uh, staff report, Trevor?
Um, I am, let's see, what am I working on? Um.
Everything.
Yeah, I, I am behind on a lot of things. I'm, I'm really trying to focus on some re, some of the re grant tasks, since that one's coming up soon. And it also, that has to do with some website updates, frequently asked questions and updating the applications. That's how I was trying to work on today, this week. I'm still working on, um, the septic permit applications are trickling in, but we're pretty good, Jennifer said last, three quarters would be that person. That's, that's really great. Um, I am expecting, uh, an application to come in for carport and I don't think it'll be a view issue, although it's an area that could be. Um, but I also am going to the, I'm gonna bring maybe you or went back to you before I send it back to HCD, um, I'll talk to coastal, I have a meeting with coastal commission staff next week. About the LCP update, they'll bring this up, but, um, uh, the county recently changed their, uh, environmental, changed their interpretation, their regulations, so they now don't require a minimum two-bedroom septic system or a house. So, um, so that you could, you know, a lot of these, um, places that have like a detached bedroom, they can just convert that into a E without um, any septic upgrades, which I think could be really beneficial, but I also think we have to be careful because the one that I found out about, and they were calling, and you know, they have a thirteen, fourteen square thousand, fourteen hundred square foot, one-bedroom house with a six hundred square foot, one-bedroom E. And I think, I think that's too much. I don't, I don't think that there's just gonna be two people living in, you know, the thirteen, fourteen hundred square foot house. And I think, so I think, I think the city should put, I would like you to consider some options in terms of maybe put, you know, if it's a twelve hundred square foot or bigger, you'd have to have at least two bedrooms, something like, so, um, I think. We have a lot of, you know, there's, you know, and there's a three thousand square foot two-bedrooms, um, so, and, and, so I, I think maybe we should consider sort of how realistically.
Do you think we'll see that again in April or May?
Yeah, April, yeah.
Any changes for future agenda items that anybody wants to add or remove?
With this, uh, well, just to maybe, just a, a food for thought. So what, two years ago, or whenever I first joined the commission, we were part of our general plan update, looking at design review. And but at that time, we had no design review projects and really haven't had any until very recently. Um, and I think one thing that has stood out to me, reflecting upon the past two projects in the past. And then thinking about our new design review. I remember our new design review. Qualities, guidelines, thank you, that's the word, standards, uh, was, I, I believe that we had add, we had made um, story balls a requirement in those. But, I mean, that didn't come up in either of these past two design reviews. And I, I mean, I'm of the, I'm of the opinion that I don't think they should be required. I think they should be required where administrator thinks that there might, where there might be like a view issue, I guess, only in those situations, but, um, that.
You are, you are right. I, you know, I didn't expect these projects to have view issues, so I didn't really think about it. And I guess that would be the administrator at call on this. But I, I think it's a good point, cuz I think the planning commission, oh, I'd like to go, go back and look at that discussion. So I think you guys sort of wanted story falls for more projects, um, maybe not every project, but for more. And this one that's coming up isn't in the, it, it, I don't, it's in an area where views could be an issue, so.
Yeah, I mean, but yeah. I think, I feel like you have a good judgment as to whether or not a project's gonna be sort of controversial from a view perspective. And I think, I think that's a good limit, limit.
Yeah, but you know, there was a project on, um, Berry that wasn't controversial because of the views, but because of its size. And, you know, I think that's three.
Do you wanna do an agenda? Do you wanna just cover that staff report next month or what?
Uh, great, great law, can we dive back into those? I don't know what, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, you know, I think, you know, one of the things we talked about is can we, is there a way to kind of implement these at least? Maybe they're not strict requirements, but is there a way that the planning commission can use those guidelines still as like policy for helping you make decisions, design? So we could, we could, you know, get to that a little bit more down, since clearly things with the general plan aren't moving at the speed of light.
Uh, we put it on Peter agenda. I don't know, maybe, I don't know if we're ready to dive back into our design review standards, but I guess now that I've had some experience actually trying, trying to implement them, it might be worth. I don't know, maybe, I don't know if we're ready to dive back into our design review standards, but I guess now that I've had some experience actually trying, trying to implement them, it might be worth revisiting at some point, getting another project or something.
Yeah, and I actually, I, I wholeheartedly agree, like I mentioned at last meeting, cuz that same issue of two thousand, uh, square feet came back up and again. Sorry, there's something else. I'd like to sort of revisit our draft updated.
Anything else? All right, then we are adjourned.
Great, thanks.